If I can get everybody's attention, thanks for being here. It's four o'clock. We'll put in the call meeting to order. And then this is normally a work session that comes in at 4:30. This month, we've changed that up. We're doing a call meeting at four o'clock instead of work session. We'll go through the agenda. We'll make sense as to why it's called. This is a little bit different. This is going to be the presentation where Rushton is going to present the 2021 audit. So we'll have the audit presentation. We do have a portion of time that we'll devote to explaining some of the details that's there. We'd also wanted to create an opportunity for public comments in there as well, which typically aren't part of a work session agenda. So the reason for the change is to adjust those things. One of the, I think the keynotes is to talk about typically your audits are done late spring or with summer is the time when your presentations are done because the audits are completed. We did request an extension or we've, on behalf of the County of Rushton requested a six-month extension this year. I think it'll become evident as to what the causes behind that were as the presentation's done, but it is a unique time for having a request. It's almost the end of 2022 and we're presenting the 2021 audit, but we wanted to make sure that it is done correct and that it's presented correct and that all that information is displayed. You'll look, if you saw the agenda for the meeting, Mr. Sam Latimer with Rushton is going to do the audit presentation. Followed by that, we've asked the Wood from administration within the office to kind of do an explanation presentation on some of the items that will be discussed here in the audit. And then we'll kind of close that up from our end so just so everybody can understand the flow of how we'll get through the first meeting. We moved to four o'clock instead of 4:30, just in case if we were pushed for time, we wouldn't affect the 5:30 regular call meeting that we have every single month. So that's just to kind of give an explanation as to why it's done a little bit different this month versus past months. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Latimer and let you run with it.
Thank you very much. That's right. It is a little late and we did have to request an extension on the audit. Basically, I'm going to run through the audit. I've got some slides here. You've got commissioners, you've got three different items in front of you, you've got two letters and a big report here. And so my presentation will summarize that report. So like Chris said, I'm Sam Latimer, a partner at Rushton Company. This is our first year doing the audit here at Pickens County. And so first-year audit's always a challenge. We ran into some issues that we had to work through and so I'm here to present that now. But feel free to follow along on the presentation. So if I could, actually, I've got to click here. I'll click.
Just flip around and start.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so as you probably know, an audit is an important part of your internal control and it's, we're here to talk about your financial statements. These are the financial statements ended December 31, 2021. As your auditor, it's my responsibility to issue an opinion on your financial statements, but it's ultimately the government of Pickens County, Georgia, to have the responsibility for the financial statements. We're here just to issue an opinion on those. So we test the transactions, we look at internal control, we make sure that there are safeguards in place, and talking about policies and procedures that are safeguarding the assets of the county. And we do that using government auditing standards. So that's a requirement under Georgia state law to use government auditing standards. We've issued our opinion and that opinion is on page one through three. That's an unmodified opinion of the financial position at December 31, 2021, the respective changes in financial position, the cash flows for the fiscal year then ended. I always like to talk about the government-wide financial statements. There's two different kinds of accounting in a government financial statement. You've got a full accrual statement and that's what we call the government-wide statements. There you have two statements, a statement of net position, that's on pages four, five, and then you have the, that has your assets, liabilities, and then your residual net position. So the equity is what we call net position in a government financial statement. Then you've got your statement of activities. That presents the results of the operations of the county. And so these statements take the business-type activities and the governmental activities and puts those together in two different columns where you're able to see on a full accrual basis, the financial health of the county. And so the residual part of that, those statements, is your net position. In government, in governmental accounting, net position is divided up into different categories. And so it's more informative than just a retained earnings like in a for-profit entity. Net position in capital is your largest. That's if you were to take all your assets, minus your depreciation, minus any related debt. And you can see that number is about $52 million for Pickens County. And then you have restricted net position. And those are assets that are collected that are restricted as to use. So an example of that would be like your SPOLOST. Your SPOLOST dollars are collected and those items have to be spent on capital items. And that's what makes up a large portion of your restricted net position. And you can see that your restricted net position is about $10.2 million. Then you have unrestricted net position, which is, that's whatever's left over. So you take your capital, you're restricted, and then you have your unrestricted. And so that's a negative $2.4 million. But as you see in total, you've got about $5.9, $59 million or $59 and a half really. If you look out to the side there, you can see your revenue over expenses. It was a very healthy year for the county. You can see that there was a change in net position of $3.5 million. A lot of that has to do with tax revenues are just up across the board. Economic activity, you probably know, we've seen this in all the governments that we're auditing, tax revenues are up quite substantially. And I believe it was about $2.5 million more in tax revenue this year than the prior year. You also had the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Grant. That, the $2.3 million of that was recognized this year. So that's attributable to that large increase you can see there. If you look at over the prior year, you had about 1.7 revenue over expenses and then this year, or December 31, 21, you had about $3.5 million increase. Going to your general fund, of course, the general fund is the largest bucket. I call it a bucket. It's your largest fund. It accounts for the activity that doesn't really belong in any other specific fund. You can see your revenues increased about $1.1 million or about 4%. If you take a look at some of the items under there, property tax, up 10%. Local option sales tax, up 16%. Motor vehicle, TAVT, both up 21%. Intergovernmental revenue is actually down, which is interesting, right? If you remember, in 2020, we had what we called the CARES Act. That was the COVID Response Act in where the government, the federal government sent out lots of money to local governments. We didn't have that this year. But still, even not having that, you still had a $1.1 million increase in your general fund revenues. Expenditures decreased about $1.7 million or 6%. General and admin, district attorney, both personal services were up. General admin was up about $99,000. The district attorney personal services were up about 91% or $97,000. Jail operations were up quite substantially, about $366,000 or 14%. Now, some of that decrease is a little misleading in that the ARPA grant paid for some of these expenses. So some of your personal services were funded by ARPA grant and that's what it's there for. But you can see the share of personal services decreased 11% and then your fire and personal services decreased about $740,000. I like to show unassigned fund balance. That's the fund balance that's left over in the general fund for management's discretion. We can look at that and you can see compared to '20, it's very similar. So about $10 million in both years. But I like to show that as a percentage of expenditures. And so you can see this year, about 38% of operating expenditures, or if you want to put that in time, about four and a half months' worth versus about 4.3 in the prior year. Little graphical representation here. You can see your, this is a graphical representation of the numbers that we just explained. You can see about a million-dollar increase in revenues and then a big drop there. And so that gap there is the difference between those, you can see. I do expect that to return to normal next year. And so that gap between, you can see 19 and 20, the gap between the blue line and the green line, I would expect those to kind of return to normal since we won't have the ARPA expenditures funding some of the personal services in the general fund. I'd like to show general fund revenue by source. This shows the diversification of your revenues. You can see that your property taxes are about 40%, local option sales tax about 17%, and then about 10% charges for services. And then you've got other little buckets there. And so that's a nice little healthy mix of revenues you can see in the general fund. General fund expenditures, you can see, and this is pretty typical, public safety makes up about 50% of that or about 45, judicial about 14, general government 16%, and then your public works makes up about 15%. So that's a mix of your total expenditures in the general fund. You've got the water fund on page 14. You can see that operating revenue increased about 6% or $173,000. Water consumption increased about 65%. That's a bit misleading in that the county has an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Jasper. I couldn't find a good way to segregate that out into the consumption reports versus consumption, but if you look at that, you're probably, your consumption, true consumption is probably up about 6 to 10%. That's where your revenues are up. And you can see that your number of customers are up about five, so that would make a lot of sense there. Operating expenses, they also increased about 20%. Cost of services increased about 12%, personal services about 47%, and then depreciation went up about 5%. And let's take a look at a graph here. You can see that, looking at the revenue in the water fund, it's about even with your operating expenses. You can see the prior two years, 19 and 20, you've got a little gap there between operating and operating expenses and revenues. That gap is your profit. And you see that kind of dried up this year and hopefully we'll see that come back down and you'll have that gap there, more of a gap between your operating revenue and operating expenses. And you see your income dropped, that's your operating income, dropped a little bit this year, just below zero, about $44,000. You've got your airport funds, operating revenue up about 39%. That is really due to the increase in aviation and jet fuel, up about $190,000 or 53%. I'm seeing this in my other airport funds as well. Hangar rental increased about 7%. I think you have some new hangars, so you're getting some new rentals there. Operating expenses increased about 18%. Of course, when your cost of fuel that you sell goes up, your operating expenses are going to go up as well. So cost of services up about 44%, personal services about 4, depreciation about 6%. And you can see here, the airport operating expenses and revenue, the green line is your operating expenses and then your operating revenues across there. You can see that it runs at a slight deficit. And then you can, you can see the, there's a slight improvement over the prior year, about $92,000 to the loss in '20 and about $45,000 this year. So healthy increase there. And so we, this is a first-year audit. And so we've gone through, and anytime you're doing a first-year audit, you need to take a look at the accounting principles and the things that, the way things are being treated. And so there's potential for, even if you have another auditing firm, you could have differences of opinion. Accounting is one of those things that you have to come to a consensus on. And so management and I looked at, or the accounting staff and I looked at some of the accounting principles and we had some prior period adjustments to make. There were a couple of receivables that needed an adjustment for allowance. We wanted to be a little bit more conservative on those allowances. We moved the pension liability into the water fund. Before, it was not in the water fund. It's now in the water fund. So that's going to put some stress on your operations in the water fund. But I believe that's correct because you have employees that reside in the water fund and so the water fund should be handling some of that liability. We had some intergovernmental payables that were not booked and we decided to book those. And so anytime you have a prior period adjustment, you change the prior, you change the beginning balance and you account for that going forward, the way that we feel it should be treated. Any of these adjustments, we spoke with management, accounting staff, and we all agreed that this is the way that it should be treated. I mentioned the pension liability. Also had some prepaid expenses that were incorrectly booked to the balance sheet. Those were claims that should have been booked in expense. For some reason, those were in prepaid. And so we decided to take the, what I would think is the correct approach and expense those items in the departments as they should be. And then we took a look at a reserve loss for claims for your self-insurance and so we booked that liability. But I do want to point out here, your L-MIG. As we were going through auditing, management brought it to our attention that the L-MIG grant had been being booked in the general fund, which is not a problem on itself, but if you're going to book the L-MIG in the general fund, you're going to need to have the expenses in the general fund. So what essentially happened was the L-MIG was being booked in the general fund, but the expenditures were in the SPOLOST fund. And so you've got a matching problem there. Anytime that you have accounting, one of our basic principles is you have to match revenue and expenses. And so we booked a prior period adjustment for that. As you can see on the first bullet point there, L-MIG revenue was recognized in the general fund from 2015 to 2020. We recorded a prior period adjustment in the SPOLOST fund and in the general fund for $3.6 million. We also restated the SPOLOST schedule. So if you take a look at the SPOLOST schedule, there were some expenses that were going through there that would have been funded with the L-MIG. And so you actually have some additional SPOLOST funds that are available for the projects that were passed on the referendum. So at this point, at December 31, 2021, the SPOLOST fund has a due from others that totals $4.3 million. Well, anytime you have a due from another fund in the SPOLOST fund, the Department of Audits correctly assumes that you are borrowing money out of the SPOLOST fund, which you cannot do per state law. And so we issued a noncompliance management comment that the county was not in compliance with state law due co-mingle SPOLOST funds with other funds in the general fund. But the good thing is, is that that's now corrected and we are accounting for that correctly going forward. And so we know how to, we know how to handle this now. And so, and these kind of things happen. So this is, a lot of times when we come in and we do a new audit, we find things that we feel are, maybe the other firm didn't agree with, doesn't, didn't think that it should have been done that way. If you get a couple of accounts together, we can argue all day about how some things will be booked. But ultimately, as the auditor, we gave our advice and this is the way we feel that it should be. And of course, state law. We want to be in compliance with state law going forward and that due, due from will be paid from the general fund to the SPOLOST fund going forward. And so under governmental auditing standards, you know, we are required to issue an opinion not only on the financial statements, but also on your internal control. And so you may ask, what is, what is internal control? Well, internal control are the, is a policies and procedures that safeguard the assets of the county. And so what we like to do is we like to look at how those policies are designed and are they correctly designed? Are others looking over other shoulders? Is there accountability built into the system so that the county's assets are safeguarded as the best you can? Now, internal control is not perfect. It's run by human venings. You and me, we all make mistakes, right? Collusion is something that could avert internal control. But ultimately, you want to make sure that internal control is as sound as possible. And so as your auditor, we try to give recommendations to beef those internal controls up and make that as robust as possible. And of course, we're talking about internal control over financial reporting. And so that overlaps into some of your operational internal control as well. And so governmental auditing standards require that we issue our report on internal control. We don't issue an opinion on internal control, but we look at internal control and give any suggestions we can. So ultimately, we issued our report on internal control in other matters, compliance would be another. We issued two material weaknesses and those were due to the prior period adjustments and the year-end closing procedures. Now, I would like to say that this is not a reflection of your current finance department. I'm talking about what happened at December 31, 2021. So in my eyes, this is something that was a prior finance department's issue. So what, I think you have a competent, or I do believe you have a competent finance department now. And I'm not trying to talk about the other finance department. All I'm saying is that there were some material weaknesses that we thought needed to be booked on your financial statements. So we go through your other offices, the constitutional office. We look at probate, magistrate, the sheriff, all those. We issued some significant deficiencies. We had 10 of those and some of those range from mostly segregation of duty issues or, for example, not having a voided receipt procedure, or not having someone approve a journal entry, or someone not looking at the cash receipt before it gets to the bank. And so that's, that's how we look at internal control. And so ultimately, I expect some of these to go away next year because management or the people in charge are going to address these and beef up those internal controls. And so that's what I'm hoping to see next year. Now, we did have two instances of material noncompliance. We did not amend the budget, or excuse me, I shouldn't say we. Management decided not to amend the budget. They did not implement that budget, so they decided they didn't want to change that budget. And per state law, if you have a over 3% variance with over appropriations, then you're, you should either amend or do a budget adjustment. And here we are, but in, you know, September, October of the following year, management just didn't think it was appropriate to make a budget adjustments to a budget, number one, that they didn't create, or two, it's, you know, almost an entire year later. And so there's a material noncompliance comment for over appropriations over your budget. And then the other would be, like I mentioned earlier with the L-MIG, is the co-mingle of the SPOLOST fund. So you have that due from the general fund in the SPOLOST fund. And so ultimately, you borrowed money from the SPOLOST fund, the general fund borrowed money from the SPOLOST fund. And so we issued an, out of compliance with state law based on those facts. And like I said, we expect to see, see some of these go away. Anytime you've got a new auditor coming in, they're going to see things that maybe the prior auditor didn't see or didn't think was material or didn't think, there's many different reasons that we would have these and someone else might not. But we're giving our professional opinion on these. And so I always like to end my presentation with what's coming next with governmental accounting standards. GASB, your governmental accounting standards board is always busy. They keep me busy. They keep me in business. GASB 87 is the lease, the lease transaction standard. This is, this is the one that's really kind of rocked everybody's world. It really changed 20, 30, 40 years of lease accounting. And so we're actually implementing this on clients right now. And so it basically, it came up with a single approach for accounting for leases. And so really, the accountants are having a hard time because we used to look at leases as capital or operating. Now, we don't, we don't do that. It's going to be one single lease model. And so we will assist with implementing this next year during our audit because it's a big standard and that's a big change. GASB 91, there's a change. GASB changed the way conduit debt obligations are supposed to be disclosed. And so it establishes a model for how that should be disclosed, if the additional commitment should be booked, how conduit debt should be booked on your books. And most of that will be disclosure. That is effective for December 31, 2023. And then you've got GASB 96, that's coming up in December 31, 2023 as well. Much like the lease standard, it actually borrows a lot of the language from the lease standard, but if you have investments in subscription-based technology arrangements, GASB would like you to account for those as a capital asset and as a lease, as you're paying for those. So it borrows a lot of language and standards that were established under GASB 87. So I'd always, I'd like to say that we're getting a good practice round with GASB 87 and then 96 is coming right behind it. So we want to be ready for those as well. And so those are the accounting standards that come up, that are coming up over the next two, three years. And then if commissioners have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions I know that's a lot of information to digest. You're more than welcome to email, call, whatever you need to. Always available.
I appreciate your comment and making the presentation. And I know that as we talked about at the beginning, the additional six months of going through and the engagement for those additional years in the L-MIG item and the amount of work that you guys have put into preparing this, we appreciate it.
Well, I would like to mention, I'd be remiss if I don't, the accounting staff, some of the staff in the water department, every, you know, this is a team effort and so they put in a lot of effort. HR, everybody here at the county, your staff did a fantastic job getting us information. We always ask for a lot, especially on first year. I promised them that it won't be, we won't ask for quite as much next time, but we wanted, we wanted to make sure that we're comfortable, did a good job, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve Pickens County.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. So we'll kind of transition over. I've got to switch the slides off and switch over to having Bill come up here in a moment. I mean, as you, as you see, a couple of the items that are brought up here, I think require some further staff explanation that they require, kind of how the processes were detected, how they were followed through. And I think Bill has put together a good presentation to help potentially answer some of those questions, I'm sure some of you have got. And so we'll have, we'll have him come up and set up to do that. But I do want to say thank you again for.
Well, I am required to make a required communication with you before I end my presentation. I apologize for doing this out of order, but you do have this letter here and I am required to, I'm not going to read the letter to you, but I will, I would like to summarize it. I just wanted to say that there weren't any major changes in the accounting policies and there were some accounting estimates. We looked at those, we agreed with those, we thought that management handled those in a reasonable way. Some of those more significant would be the pension plan, life expectancy on depreciation of assets, your OPEP plan, landfill closure costs, those type of things. We didn't incur any difficulties during the audit with any uncorrected, I'm sorry, there were no uncorrected statements. Any adjustments that we wanted to make, we talked through with management and we made those. So we didn't have any disagreements with management. You've provided a management representation to me, so you've taken responsibility for the financial statements management has. And I've already talked about the other, any of the other findings. And so that was it. That was the other letter that I had, I wanted to make sure that I went over with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to switch up and get Bill to come up and give a, kind of a deeper dive, I guess would be a better way to phrase that. I just, yeah, I wish I could read it just, and I don't think it shut off since the meeting began. I will say it feels incredible to me upfront, so I will sit back down, but I'm trying to be nice to everybody else. It's like blowing gold, I can do it off the top of my head. We walked in, everybody said it's hot, I walked over and did it. So we've got, Bill is at the podium now. We're going to let him kind of go through with some deeper explanations. We've, I think, kind of covered where we're going, trying to help explain a little bit further how these things were identified, how they were reported, how the whole process has occurred. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Bill, and I'll let you.
Yeah, we could try to list the follow Mr. Latimer's report as. Where charitable adjustments and findings from the fiscal twenty twenty-one audit, three inherited problems, as Mr. Latimer said. These are in prior years, and they're inherited because you are a new administration. The chairman began his first term in twenty-one, the two post-commissioners began their first terms of this year. So you are a new administration, and whatever Rushden made adjustments to, you inherited them. So the problems, there are three of them. Two of them are drill downs on what Mr. Rushden talked about, one is in addition. The four-point-three million dollar loss in the general operating fund, the defective financial controls and processes that Mr. Latimer mentioned, and something that he didn't talk about because it was not a subject of the audit, but it's related to this, is there were audits that were here that were prohibited by law. These two items are inextricably related. Mr. Latimer's comments basically insinuated that strongly. They're all three, though, related in this situation, just at least topically, if nothing else. Now, before we get into this, we're going to do this at eighty thousand feet. But at eighty thousand feet, this is a very tedious topic. So I apologize for the tedious level that we're going to have to go through. And I'd like to place this in record, Ashley, if you could provide hard copies. The years. Twenty-one was the subject year of the audit. It was budgeted, as Mr. Latimer said, by the prior administration, but administered by the current administration. The three problems occurred two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty, running into twenty-one because they had to be adjusted in the twenty-one audit. And now we've got twenty-two that we've got to go forward with and basically absorb these adjustments and conduct our operations in a responsible manner that considers what they are and what magnitude of them are. The inherited problem, four-point-three million dollar loss in the general operating fund. And it was done through inappropriate accounting, two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, grant money from Georgia, and health insurance premiums. The grant money from Georgia was a little over three-point-six million. Health insurance payments were a little over seven-hundred thousand, which gives us a total adjustment to the general fund of four-point-three million. The accounting, and this is extremely important sequence of perspectives because it's equally important to understand what this is and understand what it is not. What it is, is accounting treatment that inappropriately used grant money for the wrong expenses at the wrong time and that inappropriately did not record certain payments as expenses, but recorded them as assets, which caused the financial records of Pickens County to look better than they actually were. This is why they had to be adjusted, and that's why Rushden did the adjustment. Here's what this is not, to be absolutely clear. There, this is not about the outright taking the funds from the county treasurer, such as an individual taking county money or buying personal items with county money. However, in terms of what it does to us and what we have to work with and what the board has to basically oversee, the first situation hurts the county almost as badly as the second one would if it had existed. The grant money from Georgia was not used when it was supposed to be used. Excuse me. Uh-oh. Was not used when it was supposed to be used, and it was not used for what it was supposed to be used for. The grant is the L-MID grant. The local maintenance and improvement grant program provides funds to local governments to perform improvements to their respective roadway networks each year, paving, surfacing, and a host of other things. It is from the state of Georgia. It is for specific projects and specific years, and it's a universal element of local government existence in this state, which is why it is always high-profile and is very important to any county and any municipality across the state. So we basically have Georgia grant money, it's L-MID, and then we have the accounting of it. And here's the example county budget year for twenty twenty. This is what actually happened, but we're pulling twenty out because it was the year that was discovered first. So we have twenty twenty, we have two thousand nineteen, we have to look at two thousand twenty-one, and we have to look at two thousand twenty-three. One of the things that makes this tedious is the fact that we have multiple years involved, and we have accounting and legal concepts that basically cross the year boundaries. So that's what makes it, one of the many things that makes this extremely tedious. In twenty nineteen, the budget, twenty budget was approved by the then-board of commissioners. In twenty-one, the grant formula amount notification came from Georgia. This is a letter that basically tells a county or municipality what they're going to get, and it triggers the application process. Twenty-one grant application was filed in twenty. The twenty-one grant money was received in twenty. It was recognized in income as the twenty, I mean, of twenty-one in twenty, and it was used to cover twenty expenses with the grant. That's where the problem arises, and that's where, why the adjustment had to be made by Rushden. So we had Johnson resurfacing projects that did most of the projects that were in the grant application. And the grant application, when it's filed, has to list specific projects that the money will be granted to cover, and it's expected that those projects will be covered by the grant money. So we had all of this happen in twenty, but what didn't happen is the grant money was not used to pay Johnson resurfacing on their projects. That's what happened. That's the problem that was uncovered. And the discovery of this occurred in twenty-one. Here in twenty-two, we have the disclosure to Rushden that was made. We had the notification from Rushden back to us that it indeed was a problem and that they were going to have to deal with it. And you just heard Mr. Latimer's presentation that basically presented what they had to do. But this basically right here in one picture for one year is what happened. Now, this happened in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And that's why the amount, amount was a little over five-hundred thousand in this year. That's why the amount is three-point-six million, is because five years are involved. Again, the grant money was not used when it was supposed to be used and was not used for what it was supposed to be used for. Now, these health insurance payments. The county is, as a self-insure program, and from time to time, the county has to disperse money to pay the insurance company for its portion of health insurance expenses. In this situation, and this is the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar item Mr. Rushden talked about. In this situation, payments were not treated as expenses, but they were treated as assets, and it's as simple as that. And that's inappropriate accounting. So we've got both of those going on, and that's where the four-point-three million dollars comes from. What are we doing? Treatment was stopped in twenty-one in terms of handling of the grant situation. We basically had to eat six-hundred-thousand dollars of unrecognized revenue in twenty-one to cover this. And then there's the four-point-three million dollar adjustment made in the twenty twenty-one audit that covers both of them. The financial controls and processes, Mr. Latimer spent a good bit of time on this. I'm not going to repeat it, other than to say that it was for multiple years, and there were actually fourteen changes. He mentioned several of them, but there were actually fourteen changes that were reported and required by Rushden. What we've done on that is implementation has already started. There were some things in there that, things start, we started seeing things in twenty-one that needed, that were peculiar to us. Some of those, we felt like we had to fix immediately, just because of the nature of the situation. Some of those, we decided to let go until the new auditor arrived so that we could be provided with a roadmap of how to go forward from a controlling process standpoint. And it is those items that he commented on in terms of what was left for them to basically counsel and advise us on. Now, the audit is prohibited by law. And this basically has to do with retention of the previous audit firm for prohibited years, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty. The law text is enacted by the Georgia General Assembly in two thousand ten as it relates specifically to Pickens County. The auditor, the board of commissioners, have to employ an auditor. That's what the same, that first line is about. The local act, Georgia law, goes on to say, "The same person or firm shall not perform such audit for more than four consecutive periods." Roll back in history, two thousand and ten, Malden and Jenkins. Two thousand and eleven, Rushden was actually here. Two thousand and twelve, R.L. Jenkins and Associates were here. Now, this is just an observation, it's not a fact, but I will make it. It is very unusual to change auditors for three years in a row. We go to two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. There was a January fourteenth proposal, contract for one year and three annual renewal options. That was compliant with state law. Then, that was Bates Carter. Then, we go to seventeen, we go to eighteen, we go to nineteen, we go to twenty, and it was Bates Carter again. That was prohibited by state law. In seventeen, there was a standalone engagement letter that basically the audit was conducted by, same in eighteen, same in nineteen, same in twenty. So we have four years of audits that were prohibited by state law. We also could not find anywhere in our files where the B-O-C, there was any B-O-C action to approve any of these four years, unlike the original contract for thirteenth through sixteen. It may be there, we just couldn't find it. Okay, what about this? The board commissioners made a public disclosure on this on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and by reading a statement into the record in a B-O-C meet, regular meeting, they made a commitment in that statement to approve audits annually, and it would go before the B-O-C, the entire of B-O-C, and a new audit firm would be hired, and that was Rushden. A little bit about the history. Two thousand fifteen, we got basically three groups of years here that were looked at by both the staff and by Rushden. These are all budgeted and administered by the prior administration. And we've got basically three groupings of the years. Two thousand fifteen, there were no apparent regularities on anything. So we're going to color code that a little bit differently. Two thousand sixteen is when the state grant problem emerges. Two thousand seventeen is when the audit problem emerges. In all of these years, the grant problem repeats annually. The audit problem repeats annually from eighteen, nineteen, to twenty. The health insurance expense problem is in play. We did not find that item, Rushden did. And Rushden found the number that they needed, basically looking at, I believe, twenty. They knew they had the number that they needed because of the nature of this particular item. They did not have to go back beyond twenty, which is why we don't know how many years are involved. So it could, we just know that there are more years involved than twenty. And the defective financial controls and processes are in play. Discovering disclosure, the L-MID loss, the grant problem was discovered by staff and disclosed to Rushden, and the health insurance expenses problem was discovered by Rushden. Again, we did not discover that here. The deficiencies in financial controls and processes, some identified by staff and disclosed to Rushden, and some others were identified and discovered by Rushden. The audit is prohibited by law, was discovered by staff and disclosed to the public as we discussed a little bit earlier. Okay, we had these things that occurred in sixteen through twenty. We have twenty-one and twenty-two where we've got the discovery. We've got the disclosures, we've got the reversal from a financial standpoint of the problems that are reducing the general fund budget, it's corrected. And then we've got to go into the future, and we've got the two administrations that are involved. The impact, really felt, we really felt it was necessary to put some of this in context from a financial standpoint. We call it the pain factor because it is painful. That's four-point-three million dollars, what's the impact of that? What does four-point-three million dollars mean to the county? We gave a five percent quota last year for this year. That was eight-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand and a little bit. That four-point-three million dollar amount is four-hundred-and-ninety percent of our last year's quota. Fire DMS payroll, this year's two point, almost two-point-four million. This amount is one-hundred-and-eighty-two percent of our fire DMS budget. Public works budget is three-point-one, almost three-point-two million. This amount is one-hundred-and-thirty-seven percent of our public works budget. General fund balance, it started with a little at eleven-five-eighty-nine, so it's thirty-seven percent of where it started. And the general fund budget, and I took ARPA out of this, the grant that Sam mentioned, because it's not typical, basically runs around thirty-point-five million, is fourteen percent of that. So this is a lot of money we're talking about. What does it mean with regard to property taxes? Digest just came out, property tax revenues is thirteen-point-five million. This amount is thirty-two percent of one year's property taxes. Recouping it, this is theoretically, I want to point that out right at the beginning. Raise property taxes by thirty-two percent for one year. Shut down public works for fifteen months. Furlough every employee for three months. Lay off twenty-five percent of employees for one year. Give no salary increases for five years. B-O-C is not going to do those. That's strictly to put it in context and to explain what this amount of money really means to us. Now, as Mr. Latimer said, they found a way to move this back to SPOS, even though, as he said, and there was a write-up on this in the report, it is not legal in the state of Georgia to borrow from the SPOS fund. It's absolutely clear. It cannot be done. But the way that this mechanics, and there's no debt agreement between the SPOS fund and the general operating fund, but the way that the mechanics worked and the projects rolled forward and the payments rolled forward, it had the effect of that's really where it came from, even though probably nobody thought of it that way. SPOS dollars are very restricted. We can only spend them for a certain thing, certain area, and it has to be roads. In this county, please correct me if I'm wrong on this. In this county, I believe all our SPOS money goes to third parties, to paving contractors and stuff like that. That's not the case in every county. Some have their own paving crews, and some do other things, these are the larger ones. But in ours, this is what happens. So basically, we've got a movement of funds to an account whereby we only pay third parties out of it, and we. parties out of it, and we only, we only pay them so much per year, it's gonna take a long time to use that money over there. It does not equal unrestricted general operations. So if you look at our SPOS revenue, and you look at our general fund revenue, and you add them together, that's about, uh, somewhere in the mid-30 millions, so that's basically what we have in terms of revenue, and our expenditures are somewhat less than that, so we're good on that. But the point I wanna make is, if somebody gave us $100 million and said, "You can put it in SPOS, but you can only have $5 million to run the general operations of the government", we couldn't do it, even though we'd have $105 million in revenue instead of 30, 30 and 35 or so. So, it's very important. The relationship between the problems, we have the three problems we talked about, as we said, our view is that they're related, we have the inherited problems, those are a fact, we have the $4.3 million adjustment that's made by Rushden, that's a fact, we have defective financial controls and processes, that's a fact, per Rushden, we have audits prohibited by the law, that's just a fact, because the law exists. We have these years involved, we've got all years involved in the, in the fund, uh, reduction amount, we've got probably all years involved in the controls and processes, we've got a prohibited audit for '17, we've got prohibited audits for '18, '19, and '20, this is a rendition of the overall situation on one page, one picture. The whole purpose of financial controls and processes is to prevent what happened in the $4.3 million box, that's the whole purpose of them. The purpose of an audit is to find things like the two items that gave rise to the $4.3 million reduction in the general fund balance, and to make the adjustments, which Rushden did. The job of the, of, of the audit firm conducting the audit is to also audit the financial controls and processes, as Rushden did, and as a result, we have 14 items that have to be addressed. So we've got a situation that went on for five years, four of them prohibited audits, and none of that happened. That's my close.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think, again, just trying to help explain, and, and there's, there's a balancing act, I guess, that you gotta throw on the shoulders of, of, of the commission board is, yes, it's extremely big, it's a big deal, it's, it's difficult to swallow, it's gonna put challenges on us in managing our budgets moving forward to help replenish the general fund, to get it back where it is. But I think the balance part is, is to let you know that we are still okay, um, that there is still the general fund balance that can keep us moving forward, that can keep us going, that we're on top of it. Uh, as you've just heard, the, the, a large majority of what was reported was discovered by staff and reported to the auditors. This wasn't things that, that caught us off-guard over the last year, we've been kinda working through the discoveries and trying to find out what the, what the, the best outcome was, with the exception of the 723,000, the, the rest of that was all discovered by staff and, and reported to the, the new audit firm. So I wanna, I wanna encourage everyone to understand that, that we're not ignoring this, we're on top of it, that we've gotten under control, and that we were elected to be good stewards, and to try to find the best possible way to manage the funds that we have in place, and that's exactly what we're doing, that's exactly what we're working through. But we also have an obligation to be transparent, and this isn't trying to point fingers, it's just trying to point the facts out to give the years that are there, but we've gotta be transparent that this, this is the situation, it is what occurred, it is where the money's having to be transferred. Um, I know that the majority of the room is full of department heads, and, and if you, if you saw us all making faces when you were presenting budgets, as to trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna juggle through things, this is why, I mean, we've known that, that, that we were gonna have to make some adjustments, uh, to what was there. So I wanna encourage everybody to understand that, that we are taking this extremely seriously, but I don't want you to feel like that we're thinking we're gonna close the door. We wanted to give you a picture of, of how big it was, but not necessarily try to create any kind of panic, that we're not still, uh, able to function, able to run, don't want staff to worry about that we're not gonna be able to continue to make, uh, make payroll and, and continue to do what we need to do to operate and run the county. We've, we've got what we need to continue to operate the county, we've just gotta be very careful to try to make sure that we're there, uh, and to get those financial controls in place. Uh, I know some of the deficiencies, as you read through the report, when we, when you get through that, talk about things like training and systems and, and some of those different things. We've already started those processes, uh, the bid's already gone out to try to replace the accounting software, to, to replace three redundant accounting software systems that are in place right now, with one that, that will help with more transparency, it, it makes it where there's a lot better checks and balance, and it's a, a more user-friendly version. Uh, we've already started working on, on training ideas and, and attending classes, we've got some outstanding staff working in finance right now that, that are, that are staying on top of, of what's there as well. So I don't want, I don't wanna leave that presentation with a sense of, "Oh my gosh, what are we gonna do?" I wanna make sure that you, you're sure that we're taking this seriously, and we take our stewardship role very seriously as a board and as a staff, and, uh, we're not gonna try to, to sweep something under a rug to, to try to keep it from being seen the moment that, that we were able to, to release that, that presentation. We wanted to also release the full explanation so that the, the public can be aware of that as well. We're pursuing every possible option that we can, in terms of whether it's seeking out legal advice, um, in, in how we should move forward with our previous county firms, or with anybody that we're trying to do, or whether it's just taking a look at, at our budget controls and anything that we can be there. We're pursuing all of that to try to make sure we, number one, correct what's here, number two, prevent this from ever happening. Again, I don't want somebody else to ever sit in this seat, have to have this conversation with the public, or to, uh, to anybody watching online, so that's, that's my goal, is to make sure that nobody else ever has to, to have this conversation. So with that, we'll open it up for, for public comments and, and take comments, as I say.
Take some questions?
I hear you, I'm switching.
Yeah. As I'm a transition. Previous administration was using the L-MeD money in general revenue, and then replacing it with SPOS dollars. Is that the gist?
I don't know if replacing would be it, the, the L-MeD money was going into general fund, and then the payments for the, the paving projects that had been approved were being paid out of SPOS. So it was, they were being paid out of SPOS, but then the revenue was being, being deposited into general. Um, so this is trying to replenish the SPOS where those payments went out.
Thank you. I, I'm just, just like, I know the auditor guys said several times, like, get a room full of accountants, they would all argue, have you reached out to the former finance people to see what they're, maybe like, "No, you were right, you're wrong."
We, the audit firm reached out to the previous audit firm to try to confirm anything that was there, and, and we, we're not gonna throw the audit firm under the bus for trying to have conversations, those are things that they discuss to try to see if they can get better understanding, but the, they, they were, uh, were contacted, and, and that conversation did exist, and as far as comments that they made, that, that would be outlined for me to try to indicate how that conversation went. I do believe that from that conversation, it was evident that they were aware that the problems were there, um, that, 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 that conversation did take place. For anybody who rethinks, uh, y'all have any questions or comments from the reports, welcome to the board. Yeah, so fun, uh, fun first year. Well, we will, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second. A second, so we'll adjourn the meeting, uh, at 5:01 from the, the call meeting, we do have our meeting at 5:30, that'll be our regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, we'll free to stick around, or, uh, we'll be glad to see. Thank you.